Thursday, February the 23rd, regularly scheduled session of the New Smyrna Beach Airport Advisory Board. Tammy, would you like to call the role?
Chair Dempsey.
Here.
Vice Chair Starley.
Here.
Member Lester.
Here.
Member Mitchell.
Here.
Member Smizer.
Here.
Member Norville.
Here.
We have a presentation ahead of public input?
We can, we can do public input first. I think that was just a typo somehow.
Okay, all right. Do we have any public input for the airport advisory board meeting? Yes, sir, if you come forward, if you introduce yourself?
Hey, how are you all doing? I'm Tyler Lurie, 2022 Aero Circle. I'll keep it real short. A couple of things I just wanted to ask about. I would hope that maybe, first off, just a suggestion or maybe a question. I think it would really be helpful if maybe we could ask questions or public input after information's presented rather than before, because it kind of develops a lot of questions that we got to wait a really long time before we get a chance to do this again. So, just a thought I had, maybe it would be considered. Second off, I just hope that with this study, you know, I really did not like to see the landing fee even to be mentioned. I think that personally, I really hate even the sound of that because I think that part of this study, I really hope that you guys have some economist or, you know, that can really look at the economic impact that this airport brings to the community. I know the study hasn't been done in a very long time, but I really hope that that's presented because I don't think everybody realizes how much it impacts the overall city, overall than just the fuel sales or just the airport or the airport businesses. You get people that come in for Flight Train, they stay in hotels, they go to restaurants. People come here on vacation, they fly into the airport. So I hope that's included. And I hope that the landing fee, because that's obviously going to change the operations. And if you guys were to implement that, you'd see a decrease in that economic impact, in my opinion. And it would have changed the overall way the airport's fully used. For example, I fly, I learned to fly here, been here for a very long time, now close to 10 years. I used to get fuel in Tallahassee all the time. It was a decent rate, good services. It was a perfect kind of stopping point from where I go and out west near Arkansas. I landed there, stopped, bought fuel, paid a facilities fee, had a cup of coffee, left to get a letter in the mail for a landing fee, asking if I want to put a credit card on file to pay it automatically next time. I'll never go there again. And I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way. And I think that the term landing fee is just, I just really think that, you know, maybe Miami International or Orlando International, but I hate to hear that's even being considered. That's just my opinion. And I hope that the study examines that and economic impact and economists is involved. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments. We, we usually cast a pretty wide net when we do these types of studies to make sure that we look at everything. So, that's, that's, that's part of it. Do we have any other public input for the airport advisory board? Yes, sir, would you like to come up?
Hi, my name is Aaron Duncan. Some of you guys know me. I am the, one of the owners and president and operator of Tiger Composites at 1531 Airway Circle. Been a, uh, I guess, 20 years. And I wish I'd had a chance to talk during the last time because I was involved with Rhonda Walker and the last time we did this study. And I think it would have been helpful to have at least brought out the notes from the minutes last time when they actually got the FAA that came out. And the FAA clearly stated that any landing fee whose sole purpose was to restrict operations at a federally funded airport would, would flatly be denied. And the FAA wouldn't, wouldn't approve it. And I think that through all the study from last time, it'd be nice if, if the tower was involved with this. I'm also a pilot and a mechanic, been, been that since I was 18. And I, I think you've got a way to work with the tenants like myself at the airport that want to be good neighbors. We had an opportunity, our primary core of our business is experimental aviation. And we've gotten some customers from down at the Cape with rocketeering and stuff like that. And we actually turned down one customer that we were building some structures for that needed a place to test their engines. And we knew because of the environment at the airport that it was never going to fly because it would rattle the windows all around the airport. Even though that business has actually grown, they're doing great. They're actually doing launches out at the Cape right now. So it would have been a, a great opportunity. But there's a way to encourage the businesses to be good neighbors, you know. We always pledge to do that. And we try to let anybody know that's coming in and going out, areas that they need to be sensitive of. But currently, there is a instrument arrival procedure, what's called a STAR, for people that are flying in through IFR conditions. But with the tower, you guys can establish a VFR arrival and departure plan that the pilots have to stick to. And pilots, even the ones that are being trained, they're going to have to learn to be good citizens their whole career because noise is always an issue with an airport. So it's just a good habit for them to learn that some airports, you've got procedures and you need to follow them. And I think that's really the direction that you probably will wind up heading if anything has changed. Because like the last time, because the economy kind of went off a cliff, nothing really changed. But I think that's where you get the most bang for the buck is by steering it toward a VFR arrival and departure procedures. And then also encouraging the businesses to work with any students if they're doing flight training or customers or things like that, just to know where the sensitive areas are and how to stay away from them. You know, pilots have done that our whole careers.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Are you, are you coming to speak? All right, come on.
Hi, I'm Melvin Teal, 2022 Aero Circle. I just want, I, I know that noise is the, is the issue here, but in my mind, it's also an issue of safety. The flight school that's based at the airport mostly flies Cessna 172s. I fly a Cessna 172. The pattern altitude is 800 feet. If we're going to adjust the traffic patterns to accommodate neighborhoods and noise, we have to keep the safety of these pilots in, in mind. If you lose an engine at 800 feet and you're five miles from the airport because you're trying to avoid a community, do you have enough time to get to the airport? So I know that noise is the issue, but the unseen side of it is the safety of the pilots that use the airport. And to ask them to divert their flight plan four miles to the west so that they can go around a neighborhood and a student pilot experiences an issue, are they going to be able to make it to the runway? So I know that everybody was complaining about the noise, but there's also a safety side of that, too.
We understand. That's number one. Safety is number one with all of us in this business. Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation. Is that you, Arvin?
Uh, no, that'll be, let me introduce Mr. Jack Thompson. Jack is our consultant from GAI. Jack is GAI's Aviation Director. He's got 25 years of aviation project and airport management experience. He's been the airport manager for Flagler, Airport Director, I'm sorry, for Flagler County Airport. It's one of the busiest non-towered airports in the United States. Oh, my time's up. Okay. So, Jack has, has been kind enough to help us with a presentation today. This is a, a subject that we've brought before the board before, but we want to go over it again and explain it as we find ourselves a little bit further down the road than we were last time. So Jack, if you, I'll start the presentation for you.
Thank you, Sez. Again, Jack Thompson with GAI, South Street in Orlando. Arvin's going to pull up a presentation here. We're going to talk about what, it started off as Taxway Bravo, but we've talked to the FAA and now it's turned into a runway 725 project that includes Taxway Bravo. So if you want to go to the next slide there, we had some, some correspondence. Wow, you dressed up my slides well. I think that was Tammy. About a year ago, maybe a little longer, we lost approaches at the airport. And that was because of obstructions that were noted by the FAA. And, and they had that same letter went out to airports all over the state. Overnight, they decided that there's things in the, in the approaches that you have lost your night approaches or just your approaches altogether. So Arvin asked us to help with trying to address some of those, those approach issues. And we submitted an airspace study for the, the obstructions on runway 725. And we got back a letter, a determination saying, hey, you've got some things in here. We can mitigate this issue or that issue, but the one thing you can't mitigate is the obstacle-free zone. The OFZ is, it is written in stone. You can't have something that is not navigation-based, fixed by function inside your OFZ. So, and that was what came out of that letter. We looked at different ways of trying to figure out, so how do we get our OFZ cleared? You know, take down the fence. Well, if you take down the fence, then those fences are right on the property line. So they're right away fence. If you take it down, you don't have any other fence. You don't have any security of the airport. So taking down the fence isn't the answer. We looked at what else can we do? Lights, anything. No, you can't mitigate it. So we came back with a couple of sketches and said, okay, here's, here's our suggestion. It is because the OFZ is measured from the end of pavement to the, to 300 feet out, that's the obstacle-free zone is end of pavement. Whether that pavement is overrun or not, the end of that runway pavement is the end of, is the beginning of that measurement. So even though your thresholds have been displaced, that doesn't matter. The OFZ actually starts at the end of that pavement. So we showed a couple of these sketches that you're going to see in a minute to the FAA. And we got the email, Arvin got the email back in January saying, this is the only thing that we see you can do to, to make your OFZ compliant is what we're going to show you on the sketches. So what it requires is removal of pavement. What you see on the left side of the screen is existing condition. Our suggestion is on the right to have that 300-foot runway obstacle-free zone clear. Sorry, talking with my hands. Is to take off what amounts to about 119 feet of pavement. That's the overrun. The threshold is still to your right there. And realign Taxway Bravo to come in at the end. This, you'll see a 10-foot buffer down there. These are planning level numbers. So we don't have survey that, that dials it in exactly right now, but roughly, we're looking at 119, 120 feet of pavement removal, realign Taxway Bravo. That gets us a clear runway obstacle-free zone on the runway seven end. On the runway two-five end, which is next, is a lesser impact. It's 43 feet roughly that would have to be removed. We would also realign Tac, the taxiway to line up with that new end. Again, that gives you that 300-foot obstacle-free zone that's required by the FAA. And again, you'll see that the, the 10-foot buffer that we've got in there, so it, maybe it's a little less. Maybe it's 35 feet, not 43. Will, once we actually go into a survey or into a design, we'd get actual topographic survey and dial those numbers in where we're as, as, not conservative, on the other side, as liberal with the, the distance for the runway as possible. So if, if we can get it down to where we're only taking 33 feet instead of 43 feet, that's what we would do. So, the next slide kind of shows you what this looks like. So right now, we have declared distances on runway 725 that are published. Takeoff run available and takeoff distance available are 5,000 feet on both ends from both ways. Accelerated stopping distance and landing distance available are published. You'll notice that the landing distance available changes and it seems kind of odd that it actually gets longer. We have a, I think the published landing distance available is inaccurate because landing distance available is based on the RSA, not necessarily the OFZ or the pavement length. So you can see that there is some impact to the, the runway lengths that's, are going to be published. Takeoff run available is going to drop by 162 feet roughly. That's that 143 and, or 119 and 43 added together. But the way those are measured, if you did the project as we've shown on those sketches, your published declared distances would be what you see in that chart and your object-free zone would be cleared. You should be able to reestablish your flight procedures, your approaches into 725. And you would go with your special license with FDOT who licenses the airport. That special designation that's on the license right now would be removed.
What would be the cost on both, well, each, each end?
We haven't gotten into the, into the actual construction cost yet. We, when we talked to the FAA, they actually said, okay, we, we see this. This is what we think you should do. Put together a scope for the design. They're willing to participate in the design, not only for, they were looking at rehabbing Taxway Bravo, but now correcting the runway ends on 725 would be part of that project. So we, what they did require was an actual airport GIS survey, which is a flown survey that will pick up any other obstructions off the runway end. So that'll be part of the design as well. So we would put in an application with the FAA. Hopefully that, that would be the direction we, we'd hope to go is to put in a design grant application, do the, the design portion of it. And during that, we would be able to refine costs. The cost on 725 is not the bigger part of this project because the taxiway is, is the bigger piece of the project. It will require removing or relocating threshold lights and things like that. The nice thing is you're not moving the thresholds, so we're not going to have to restripe the, the entire runway, things like that. So the impact on runway 725, duration-wise, could be fairly minimal.
And what's the timeframe we have to get this done?
So timeframe, if, if we went ahead and put out a, an application to the FAA, I think Arvin was talking about using bill money, so that's the bipartisan infrastructure law funding that's available. You don't have to wait for the normal AIP cycle, which is pre-application in November, a grant that following June, July, August for you to get started. With the bill application, you could put it in tomorrow. And they would write a grant maybe within a couple of months. So we're looking at sometime this summer we can be started versus sometime next summer being able to start. That means that you could be done with, done with design and ready for construction because this would be a, a normal AIP-funded project. You would be ready to go come next spring. You could bid it and be ready to go into construction. So you could actually be in construction in 18 months.
I think, I think just as important is, is the funding formula for FAA and FDOT and the city of New Smyrna would be pretty much what we've been, what we've seen with the recent work that we've done. So the, the bulk of the, the bulk of the funding is going to be FAA.
Yeah, it's 90% from the FAA, 90% state makes it their highest priority is to, is to partner with the FAA. So they would fund 8% and then the local share is 2%.
So.
The FAA's attitude or interpretation of what entails, what defines an obstacle-free zone is, are they going to regulation? Or are they utilizing Advisory Circular?
That is the regulation. That's, that's straight black and white dimension.
Okay, so there's no, there's no room in terms of an interpretation, is that correct?
No, sorry.
And they are hard over on the black and white.
It's based on runway category.
With regulation, they can be.
Yeah, and it's based on a runway category as well. So you're, you're looking at what's using the airport and it sets those dimensional standards.
Keeping my mouth shut.
So the, the first picture you showed us, the option was either take out sunset or reduce, take some of the pavement out of the, the end of the runway.
So we talked to the FAA about that. That was one of the options was, hey, let's just end sunset on either side, cul-de-sac, whatever we're going to do. And the environmental person at the FAA, the environmental specialist said, you would have to do an environmental study. And the first thing you would have to do is a runway length justification to say we need to extend the runway on this end. And based on the traffic that you have right now, you're going to be hard-pressed to demonstrate that you would need to add more length to the runway, even if saving that piece on the end. The impact into the mangrove, the, the community impacts to either side, the people that, that drive that road every day. They said you're going to have a really hard time proving that it, environmentally, that it's a, a good project. So with having to do the runway length justification first, if you demonstrated that you needed less than that 4,500 feet, they weren't, they wouldn't let you do that anyway. They would not, even if you were, even if somebody else was funding it. They said, no matter who funds it, we have to do the environmental on the FAA side. We would still not be party to it and they wouldn't let you change your landing area.
So what are the consequences of doing nothing in terms of shortening the runway?
You don't restore your approaches. They would not participate in funding projects on that runway. So as you need to do more things to that runway, when you need to redo the, the parallel taxiway that serves that runway without having a cleared safety area, the obstacle-free zone cleared, they're not going to participate in those. And from your friends at the state, they've identified those obstructions and obstacles as an issue with your license. And they're, they looked for a mitigation plan. How are you going to fix this? And Arvin has given them the, the direction that we're looking at here. We're working with the FAA. We're going to try to fix this and this is the project we're looking at. That's satisfied them to the point that they've given a special license. Just noting that this, this is a, a problem that's being fixed. So you've got time to fix it. It's not like, hey, stop using this runway until you get it done. They just have it noted on your, on your license at this point.
I just want to add something to that. I think you've articulated everything perfectly. I just want to add that we have a license that hangs in our, in our building that says, you know, it's on our airport license that it issued to us. And it's got the word "special" on there. It even says, you know, they're issuing this to us, but they really don't want to. So it's kind of embarrassing and it's kind of, I think we, it's a safety issue. And it's something that's hanging over us and, you know, we really need to move forward and, and try to fix this if we can.
And it, and it says on that special likeness that this is a safety issue.
Yes.
This is why.
Yeah.
And I think as we mentioned earlier in the other meeting, safety is number one for us.
Safety, safety, safety.
So it's not just the FAA, it's FDOT as well. It's basically saying the same thing.
Do you have more?
No, sir, that's all I have. I think we presented a lot of detail and a lot of technical information. The last time the young man that works for me came in and I'm a little bit more big picture and round numbers than Dan is.
Well, we have agonized over this for years. And it's, it's created a lot of community angst because as a part of, of us looking at every conceivable solution, there were a couple in there that kind of stirred people up, okay? We would have never done them, but the, the goal was, was to look at everything that could be done possibly to solve this. And obviously, we weren't going to tunnel under US-1 or whatever. But the reality is, is that we've got an airport, our airport is operating under a special consideration right now from the state of Florida. The, the FAA is, has made it absolutely clear that we're done with this. You need to, you need to move, okay? So I think we have a motion prepared for us to consider relative to taking this action that we need to take to get these runways where they never need to be from, from the obstacle-free zone standpoint and as, and the realignment of Taxiway B. Did you, do you guys have a, a motion that we want to consider for that?
Yes.
I have a question first. Does this proposal, which we're going to vote on, does it impact any of the businesses at the airport in a negative way?
So that's a great question. So it's what, 163 feet? We can't say that it, it won't affect anybody. All we know is that it currently, in its current state, is affecting everybody. We don't have approach, night approaches into 725, which is the runway that we use the most for those, that type of activity. We have approach in the runway 29, but that's not favorable considering the winds are usually off the coast. So while it, it, we find ourselves in between like a rock and a hard place. But to do nothing, we're going to find ourselves in less favorable light with the FAA, who has, we've had a good relationship up to this point and they've given us some leeway for several years. But I think we're going to find ourselves in a worse position if, if we do nothing. And if we come to the point where someday where we say, okay, there's, there's a demand, when we get to that point, we revisit it. But we can't wait for that to happen. We don't know if that's going to happen. When it does, we cross that bridge then. We have justification and we have regular use of an aircraft that needs, that meets that criteria. Then we can go to the FAA and say, okay, now we can meet that threshold. Let's, let's talk about doing something about it. But this is where we find ourselves now and this is the reality that we're facing at the moment. So to answer your question, it could. I don't know, it's 163 feet. So for an aircraft that already struggles, it, it might. But we don't see aircraft right now that are using the aircraft on a regular basis that should be affected.
If you read the motion, we can, we'll have discussion when the motion is read. So we can, we can, I'd kind of like to do that. I'd like to get the motion on the table and then we can ask specific questions about the motion.
And if you're done with me, I'll go ahead and have a seat.
Excuse me?
Are you done with me?
He, he would like to sit down.
Yes.
I think that's between you guys.
We might, we might have another question for you, but, but you'll be nearby.
Okay.
Our, our, Jim, Joe's kind of pointing up at the ceiling. There's a spider up there or he has something he needs to say.
Come on up. Introduce yourself again.
Joseph, Airtight Aviation. In, and I don't remember which year it is. You might, Gary. It might have been 2016, 17 when we met with the FAA when we were talking about the runway lengths before. We met the requirement, exceeded it by like 600 operations. But after that meeting, the declared distances were changed. So the number of jet operations we had on the field have substantially reduced because the approach plates were changed. So we don't, we may have 5,000 feet of concrete or asphalt there, but we don't have a 5,000-foot runway. So the position we're in right now, I don't disagree that we probably don't meet the operation threshold, but it's because we reduced the declared distances and now we're going to lose another 150 feet of asphalt. It does impact our accelerated stop distances. If it's raining, we don't have enough asphalt to operate on. And most, a lot of other operators that come in are going to be in that same boat. So it's not necessarily just takeoff distance or landing distance. It's the actual safety of the accelerated stop distance when it rains and we've got a contaminated runway. So I don't know if there's anything we can go back. I, I mean, I know we lost the night approaches and that's a huge issue, but I don't know that there's an opportunity to have a little bit more discussion of either shifting sunset or there's some group, you guys may know, in Washington with the FAA that deals with modifications and waivers to some of the requirements. Don't know if there's any wiggle room at all for the obstacle-free zone or whether there's some justification for keeping the distance of the pavement since we are a commuter air carrier. There's only, we looked earlier, there are 33 commuter air carriers in the country right now. We're one of them. So I don't know if there's a way we can go back to the FAA and say, hey, can we at least keep what's there now? Anyway, for what it's worth, I think it would have a significant impact on us and other operators coming into the field currently.
Arvin, do you want to address that? Or I can?
Um, well, I, I'll give it a shot. I mean, thank you, Joe, for, for those comments. I mean, thank you, Joe, for, for those comments. Um, and from my understanding, I can, I can only say from, from where I'm sitting and, and my discussions with the FAA and, and our consultants, that it's a hard and fast rule. There's no, uh, now, going back to the Sunset question, so, you know, again, we looked at that, but the issue is, I think, I think maybe Jack already explained it fully, but, um, Jack, feel free to jump in or, or you, but I, I, I have not been able, we've been, we've been at this for about a year. Um, we've, we've, plus, since we lost our night approaches, uh, this is like the number one thing we've been pushing, uh, an issue because we don't have the approaches and because, you know, it's a safety issue, you know? We, if you're driving down Sunset right now, you know, planes are landing, you know, they're only, they're only like sometimes only like 20 feet above a vehicle. So it's not just the fence, you know, that road is, is a hazard and those people that are driving by. US-1, same thing, but you know, US-1 is not, let's face it, it's not gonna go away. Sunset, I think, um, when, when we brought this to the FAA, they said, we don't even wanna talk about it unless your community is behind it, you know? And, and we know that's not the case. So, um, that's why we're making this recommendation. So I realize it's a, it's a tough, very tough, tough thing.
We're at, we're at the end of the line with the FAA and, and the state of Florida. We are at the absolute end of the line and we're at risk at this point of, as was stated earlier, of losing all federal support for runway 725. And, and, and in my personal view, we're a lot better to get what we can get out of 725, do this alignment and, and save the, the, that runway and the federal funding that we're gonna need in the future for everything else that's gonna need to be done, resurfacing, repainting, stims, you name it. And we, every single question that has been raised all, all along, that we've gone back and gone back and gone back time after time and we keep winding up in the exact same spot with the FAA. And we're there. Any other questions? Do you have the motion?
Uh, it's up to you guys to stake the motion and get the second.
Oh, I thought you were gonna give me something to state.
It's relatively they say what they want on the motion.
So, so basically, I mean, this is just the basic verbiage is that we recommend, uh, the advisory board approve the airport staff moving forward to address runway corrections as part of an upcoming Taxiway Bravo rehab project. You can hand that to them if you'd like.
Okay. Do you want, so I need to state that?
You can state it however you like, but that's, that's kinda what we broke.
Okay, so what we've got on the table is a proposal, um, to realign, uh, Taxiway Bravo at the end of runway 07, removing 119 feet of runway and realign Taxiway Bravo. On runway 25, we're gonna remove 43 feet of runway and realign Taxiway Bravo to, um, meet FAA and FDOT requirements. Make up motion to approve that.
Second it.
We have second. Do we have any more discussion? Motion's approved. Oh, we have to vote?
Chair Dempsey?
Approve.
Vice Chair Starley?
Yes.
Member Lester?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Smizer?
Yes.
Member Norville?
Yes. Okay, motion stands, approved. What's next?
So I have a few other agenda items. I know everybody's been here a long time and you're probably getting tired, so I don't have a, a, a lot, but I do wanna just to update you all on a few items that we're working on. Um, one is the, okay, I'm sorry, we're moving into the consent agenda, my mistake. All right, so one of the, um, things, another one of the projects that the airport is working on right now or, or would like to work on, let me correct myself. Rhonda Walker, for those of you who are familiar with her, was the, uh, former airport manager. Um, and she was working on, uh, creating some minimum standards for the airport. Um, and she was not able to finish those just because she fell into some, some hard times and, and health issues, et cetera. So, um, what we've found is we have been, uh, getting to know the airport, we've found that that's something that we believe would, would help, the airport would protect, um, the airport and also protect, uh, the businesses that operated on it by creating some, um, minimum standards so to help airports and the businesses on it. So a little bit of the background, um, minimum standards were developed, uh, to, or actually recommended by the FAA to help an airport that's been developed or improved with federal funds, to, to stay in obligation with those grants. Because those, those grants require them, the airport to be, um, available for all types, classes and kinds of, of aeroactivity, aeronautical activity. So the federal obligations include the requirement that the airport and its, uh, facilities be available for public use and that, um, again, so I, I covered some of that. So Advisory Circular 150, 5190-7, uh, is the guide, is, again, that's advisory circular, so provides some good background on what we should be looking for when we're developing many, minimum standards. So what is the objective here? We know, safety is always first and foremost when it comes to aviation, whether it's on the ground or in the air. Uh, so safety is, is the first priority, protecting airport users from unlicensed and unauthorized products and services. So, you know, in developing minimum standards, it allows us to set the bar, you know, to whoever's on the field, you know, to protect, um, American air or to protect air gate or whoever may be on the airport. So my goal is, is this, as we develop this, is to follow the guidelines and the recommendations of the FAA, but also be meeting with our tenants, our current tenants, uh, and making sure that we develop that specifically for our airport. Uh, we don't want to, uh, to be developing something for, you know, this isn't Orlando International, but we can still have a standard, a standard that's right for us and that fits our businesses and our community. We, the questions we wanna be asking is what type of airport are we? You know, what type of activity? What's, what's the standard for somebody who's coming in and wants to start a business here? How are we gonna measure, you know, what, their financial stability, their credit? And we wanna make sure that they're reflective of the current conditions, not something that maybe was true here 20 years ago. So one of the things I wanted to, just to present to you, and again, this would be a motion, is, is to, without a little bit of background, and I'm happy to answer any questions, is, is that if the board would support the airport moving forward with, uh, development, not to say that we're gonna issue, this is gonna be a, a project, this takes some time, um, it's gonna require input from users and, and the board. But would the, would the board support us continuing to, uh, to, to, to continue that project that Rhonda had started several years ago?
I'd make a motion that we continue that project Rhonda started.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? Okay.
Chair Dempsey?
Agree.
Vice Chair Starley?
Agree.
Member Lester?
Agree.
Member Mitchell?
Agree.
Member Smizer?
Agree.
So just continue on briefly with, uh, airport projects, and I don't have a slide for each one of our projects, but, uh, one that will be finished tomorrow, we're kind of excited about is our final sign, our final airfield sign will be installed, uh, tomorrow. We've been waiting on it for quite a while. Uh, it was on back order. Um, most of our airfield signage was done quite a while ago and those users of the airport may have noticed, uh, that the airfield's looking pretty new, just with all those brand new signs. So again, uh, thank you to GAI and Jack's team for, uh, conducting that work. Um, that will wrap up our airfield marking and signage rehab project. Uh, that was a, a $400,000 project, the estimate cost anyway. FDOT had participated at 80%. Uh, final costs are still being calculated because the project is not wrapped up, but I do believe we're gonna be under budget, although by probably not a lot. So, uh, we were able to take advantage of, we actually came under budget with the marking project and then went back to FDOT and said, hey, can we use some of that money to, um, we can either give it back to you or would you let us keep some of that money and continue on and do more signage than we'd originally intended? And they said yes. So that was a great win and I think, uh, to date, we've installed 47 signs, about half of them are lit and half of them are unlit and, and those signs are not cheap. So the lit, especially the, the lit signs, so very, very happy with that and, uh, appreciate, um, Jack again and, and everybody doing that hard work. I don't have any other slides, but if I could just briefly update you all on just a few other things.
On these signs, the feedback that I've gotten has been great.
Good.
That the, the, the flying community and our tenants that I've, I've spoken with are, are very happy with how that project turned out. So I think we did good there.
We mentioned earlier the, um, bipartisan infrastructure law. Uh, the airport here gets $295,000 a year and we can roll that money over. One of the things we just submitted a pre-application for to the FAA was for runway 725 and 29, uh, PAPI replacement and electrical vault upgrade. So if you're not familiar with the vault, the vault is a, you know, basically a big electrical house that holds all of our electrical, uh, it's got all the, everything is controlled from that room. Uh, that room needs some rehabilitation, um, you know, that's kinda like the, the motherboard of, that controls all the airfield lighting and, uh, including, and it's hooked up to our generator, which, which also, uh, needs some work. But at any rate, the PAPIs, um, for 725 and, and I think it's 1129 or is it just 29? Anyway, they are, they fail from time to time. They're in need of upgrades. Um, and that's a very, that's an important part of our, part of our airfield. Uh, I think we've got, uh, which runway is out right now? We've got one of the runway PAPI lights are actually out right now, we're waiting on parts. And it's sometimes, you know, it can be months waiting on a part. So we're hoping that this, this upgrade will modernize the PAPIs and, and make them, uh, more usable for the long term. Let's see here, Taxiway Alpha. So Taxiway Alpha is under design right now. Um, we, for, for Alpha, we're doing reconstruction of the pavement, modernization of some of the geometry, taxiway lighting, uh, lighted wind cone, uh, and pavement markings. So, um, that's underway. I think we're nearing the final draft, if I'm not mistaken, for our fuel farm rehabilitation. Uh, we should be getting close to that. When do we expect to start? Any idea when?
Probably in about two weeks we'll have, uh, a final review on both those.
Okay, perfect. So we're Taxiway, uh, and, okay, so great. So we're making progress. The fuel farm is, that's, that's pretty exciting, you know, we're gonna be able to get another tank. We're really looking forward to, uh, modern, modernizing that and, um, also addressing the apron in front of the ramp. Uh, right now, it's just not big enough. Uh, any users can tell you, especially, uh, air gate when they go to fill up their truck, you know, the truck doesn't even fit on, on that containment area that, that's concrete. So, you know, it's widening that out, making that a little bit wider for, for users. Um, that's just one of the things that we're looking at there. T-hanger rehab, so our T-hanger F, if you're, if you're a T-hanger, um, uh, tenant, you know that that building is, um, is, is rusting, some of the beams that are rusting out and being so close to the saltwater, you know, it's a, it's a never-ending battle. But we're excited to say that our pre-bid meeting was conducted on the 21st. Um, we're looking forward to, I think, mid-March when we actually, uh, we'll, we'll have the bid, uh, bid meeting and bid, bid, uh,
Opening.
I'm sorry, bid opening, thank you. From that time, we, we're looking to about 60 days out to when we'll begin that. I'm installing some tie-down cables for those folks to store their aircraft, uh, those who don't mind being outdoors, um, because we don't have any hangar space as you, as you're aware. So we're installing some tie-down cables for those individuals to, to store their aircraft outside while their aircraft, while their hangar's being rehabilitated.
Where, where is that going to be?
So it's going to be just north of the DC-7 on Taxiway Echo. So it'll be adjacent to, but up against the grass, so it won't be in anybody's way who's taxiing by, but it'll also be convenient enough for those folks. And then, we don't know what we'll do once the project is over, but we have needed a few tie-downs there, um, just, just for, you know, occasionally if we have a plane that's visiting somebody, uh, we, we don't really like, we're not gonna be, we're not getting in the tie-down business, but we did need a little space just, uh, for, you know, especially for this project.
That's down there where the blimp was?
Yes, uh, but farther, farther to the south.
Farther to the south, yes, right, okay.
Um, and I think that's about it for projects. If you have any questions about projects or anything going on?
I do.
Yes.
Uh, the vault, wherever it's going to be, does it have enough lightning rods?
Oh, so I don't know if we can ever have enough lightning rods, uh, but it does have lightning, um, I don't know what we'll have in the new, and that's something we haven't got to, but we'll, lightning is our, definitely something that we're fighting every day in the summer. Um, and it seems like a never-ending battle. Uh, there's probably new technology that's coming out that I'm not even aware about that can help.
We're not moving the vault.
No, we're not moving it, no, no, just rehabilitating it.
Taking care of the equipment that's inside and the generator.
Right.
Okay, but just so it's protected from lightning.
Make a note.
We try. It, I don't know if anything's immune to lightning, it's, we've definitely had some issues over the summer and I'm sure we will this year too.
Well, we carried old business and new business. I think we need to go back to consent agenda and approve the minutes.
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion for approval of the advisory board minutes from September 22nd?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Mitchell approved and Celeste seconded. Okay. So the minutes are approved.
Um, I did just wanna mention, I'm sorry that he left before I was able to acknowledge him, but, uh,
I gotta do roll on that first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We gotta do the roll on that. Chair Dempsey?
Agree.
Vice Chair Starley?
Agree.
Member Lester?
Agree.
Member Mitchell?
Agree.
Member Smizer?
Agree.
So I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, and say thank you to Mayor Cleveland who was, uh, present for most of both of these meetings, um, but, uh, left before I got to acknowledge him, but I say thanks to him and, um, thank you all for being here.
Um, any other business? Did we miss anything, Tammy?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, with that, I move to adjourn this meeting of the Airport Advisory Board.